This conference will now be recorded.
Um, are there any announcements?
All right, I don't have any announcements. I don't have any announcements for you today. I apologize. I was on vacation last week. So if there's something new I don't know about it, I'll get it out to you. I did want to welcome Doran to the meeting. Um, he expressed some interest in joining the planning commission and I think is interested in probably the housing conversations that are going on tonight. So welcome, Doran. Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Welcome. Public comments. Sue, this was going to be the opportunity for the person who sent us the letter.
Yeah, so um, because George is not on right now. Um, I wonder if we want to read the letter into the record. Um.
Sure, can you, can somebody, if somebody has the letter in front of them, can you do that? Sue or Andrew?
Yes, I have it up. I can, I can read it if you want.
Andrew, that's fine.
All right. So to the planning commission, dated August 3rd, 2020, dear planning board members, as you know, Brattleboro has a shortage of housing for low income tents. We own three buildings, 19 Elm Street, 118 Chestnut Street, and 124 High Street with 12 units in the town of Brattleboro. Eight of these units house people getting some kind of public assistance. We have tents that come from the Department of Corrections, Pathways, Vermont, and groundwork. We work actively with our tents and any service providers that have not, um, to make sure that these people who come out of stressful situations feel welcomed and also understand the requirements of living cooperatively in housing shared by families and people with varying schedules and lifestyles. It's our belief that decent affordable housing is a cornerstone of a vibrant, healthy, diverse community. We recently listed an efficiency apartment on Elm Street in Brattleboro. For that unit, we received 23 inquiries in just the first three days after which we took the listing down. We showed the unit to eight people and five tried to try to execute a lease. Owning property on Elm Street makes us acutely aware of the large number of people that are not properly housed in Brattleboro. This moment presents an opportunity to significantly increase housing for this population. Currently, there is federal money available through the state of Vermont to support the modifications of current housing to increase the number of livable units to be used for either people who are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless. Any homeowner who receives those funds will have to expand them by December 31st, 2020, making time very much of the essence. We want to reconfigure our buildings to increase the number of housing units in them to cover that need. However, the current zoning restrictions would not allow it. We strongly urge to implement a temporary measure that will loosen the zoning restrictions and thus allow the town to receive funds to address a problem that exists for individuals, families, and the entire community. If you give even a 60-day window for homeowners to obtain permits on more expensive grounds, we may be able to add home for people currently living in motels, shelters, or even less desirable circumstances. Sincerely, Ramona Hamblin and George Paredes.
Thank you. Um, does somebody want to comment on precisely what part of the zoning regulations we might amend in order to, to address this concern?
Yeah, I can, I can speak a little bit about his situation. And so he is interested in adding, I think, one or two units to a couple of his buildings. They're all within walking distance of the downtown. Um, and it's the density, it's the, um, the square footage that you need per unit that is a barrier for him. Um, and he's maxed out right now. So he wanted to go before the development review board to request a variance. However, staff views that as a use variance and uses, use variances are not allowed in Vermont. So we were encouraging him to reach out in a different, you know, to kind of enact a different way. So we've been talking about wanting to do an interim zoning bylaw because it is true that there are, there's CARES COVID funding for the creation of housing. Um, and it is with the goal of, um, you know, right now they're sheltering the homeless population in hotels. And so the priority for this funding is to, um, help move these, um, people into more permanent housing. So, um, so, and there is a deadline of December. I think it's like 20th. So it seems like the most expedient way to do this would be to have an interim zoning bylaw. It is in line with what we've been talking about at previous meetings. Um, just with, with schedules this past month, we couldn't move anything forward. And, um, so we encouraged him to, to, to reach out to the planning commission as we do this work.
I'm just curious, um, have we, have we heard from other people? I would, I mean, I guess I would expect we had. I'm just wondering if they've had the same, um, same thoughts or any, anything else additional?
Um, not that I'm aware of. Um, I would have to check in with the zoning administrator to see if he's had conversations. I mean, this, this has been a barrier in the past. I think that this particular individual is looking to take advantage of, um, some of the funding out there to increase the number of units in his buildings. Um, I'm not aware of others that are, but this funding just came out. Um, so maybe landlords or property owners are becoming more aware of it.
And if we want to increase the density, what, 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 what are we talking? Are we, I mean, what, what, what is, what is he thinking? And how many people per square foot or whatever? Give us a sense of what, why we have the laws we have, what we would be giving up if we were to change them?
So, uh, when we were looking, so we, when we did the last land use regulation update, we did increase the amount of square footage that you needed on the lot to have, you know, per unit. It, um, it used to kind of be a sliding scale and we moved it to, I think it's, um, I don't have it in front of me. It's like 6,000 square feet per unit. Um, part of the reason that we did that was to, um, improve the conditions. Um, we had a lot of, you know, a lot of units that could, and we couldn't handle the parking on site. So it would spill out into the neighborhood and create, create neighborhood issues. Um, also wanting to make sure that trash was properly managed and had a place. So it was kind of just fitting everything on site. Um, definitely, I think with an eye towards a suburban development pattern. I think that's fair to say that, you know, everybody deserves a little bit of green space. So that's probably a judgment call that, um, you know, we might feel different about.
And that 6,000 square feet, that's for the lot size, not for the living space?
Yeah, we don't, we don't criticize on the, the living space. Yes. Um, and I did see Felicity, George has just arrived.
Okay. George?
Hi.
Hi, um, welcome. Um, I'm Felicity. I'm the chair of the planning commission. We, we, uh, went through the public comment section and you physically were not here. So we read your letter and we are currently discussing, um, your request.
Right, thank you very much.
You, is there anything you'd like to add to the letter?
Um, not really. So I just, so at least you can see where I am. And as you can tell, I'm right now, uh, also in my car because I was, I'm in the Boston area. So, hey, yeah, I mean, one of the things that we have noticed is that in fact, there is that need. And I mean, there is even very close to Elm Street, uh, there is this whole encampment, for example, in Brattleboro of people who live in tents. So, uh, I, I do believe that actually people need to have housing, uh, if we want to, um, revitalize also Brattleboro. And we believe that that will be one of the ways, you know, to make the, essentially what we already did, we took a three-bedroom apartment and we converted to an efficiency and a two-bedroom. And we want to do that again, but the zoning wouldn't allow us because, uh, the house is like it's for a maximum of five units. In that particular case, we wouldn't even add an extra bedroom because it exists. And of course, in the other building, we would, but I mean, that would, yeah, I mean, of course, two units that we will make it will not relieve the pressure. But if there is that ability for landlords to do it, then of course, not only will relieve the pressure for people, but also it will bring the prices of rent down, you know, just simple supply and demand. If there are more houses, um, then landlords like me will not demand as much money. And, and we see that demand constantly. I mean, when I, that's what I said, like, I put the ad on, on Friday, and on Saturday morning, I had already the first nine requests and on Sunday, et cetera. So practically by, already by Tuesday, we had the tenant, you know, just like, because people are desperate.
Um, other people want to comment? Questions?
I think it's interesting that, um, that even, uh, properties like this that are very close to downtown, um, were, were changed to meet that larger square footage of a lot, um, requirement. I think the conversations, I've been on the planning board since right after that, and the conversations that we've been having since then have particularly this year have really, um, tried to focus in on how we could make more dense housing, particularly in the downtown area. So I think that a change like this really goes along with the direction that, that we were thinking about heading anyway.
Right. I mean, the, if I may say, the other thing is, of course, I mean, you read it in the letter. I don't know how much I can emphasize that is that there is this opportunity because of the coronavirus, the rent relief funds. So of course, for us, we would, I mean, when I read, send a letter to the zoning board, I said, I mean, if we will start it, let's say September 1st, we will be done by November 1st. And so who would rent it to people? It's not, because the money has to be expended by the end of December. I don't know if you have seen the legislature. So, um, I mean, if I won't be able to do it, then I may do it, but at a later time, I'm not gonna rush it, of course. And, you know, there's, I mean, I have to make sure I have the money and then do it. In this case, they will give us the money. And as long as we keep it for low income housing, they, uh, we don't even have to pay it back. So of course, for the landlords, it's free money, uh, which of course I will take advantage of. Uh, there's no doubt, but that, you know, if I help myself and helps Brattleboro, that's great.
I, I would add, Felicity, that when, um, we did the survey back in June of landlords, so it was strictly to our landlord, um, database for the rental registration program, we had about a 40% response rate. And based on the information that we got from that, which, which is a good response rate, I mean, we didn't, we didn't really go, um, tracking down too far. Um, there's like a one and a half percent vacancy rate. So that very low number that we have seen for rental units is, it's bear, it was bearing out in that survey. Um, and people don't, most landlords don't run a waiting list because there's no need to. And, and they really don't even have to advertise. I mean, we hear anecdotally, it's you hear about it through a friend of a friend or something like that because there's just no, no.
I mean, on our part, our experience in Brattleboro, we have houses since 2015. That was the first we bought was in, in 124 High Street. We haven't had the house empty for a month ever in units. And usually what we do is really, we push the people who leave to leave, let's say, on the 29th so that they are, the new people can come on the 1st. Or we ask the newcomers, the new tenants, oh, can you come on the 3rd to move in? Just because there is no, we just have one or two days. I mean, the need is just, it's there. So, uh, if there is something you, I mean, I don't really know how exactly the whole system in Brattleboro works, you know, with the planning board, et cetera. The approval will come from you or from somebody else. But, uh, um, yeah, it would be great for us to obtain such approvals, not just me, but, um, landlords who are interested. Uh, I'm not the only one, right?
No. So procedurally, um, we need language, Sue or Andrew, in order to be able to, to act on this. And it sounds like we, it would be better if we acted on it sooner rather than later. And Jessica makes a point, we've been talking about this. Um, so that's like a good idea to wait a whole month, given that there's funding on the clock, it's ticking on the funding. Um.
Yeah.
We have, did you guys, any language, maybe? Chat language?
Well, so, um, we do have, we don't have language yet, but, um, time is of the essence. And the process would be that the planning commission, um, would propose an interim bylaw to the select board and the select board would actually have to adopt it. So, um, with a little direction from you and maybe the will, a willingness to meet a second time this month to kind of go through the language and, and, um, send it up to the select board, we could get it underway.
That would be great. And I'm, I'm also interested in what, what the border of this area would be, that this would be acceptable. Like, would we, would we say, because potentially parking could be an issue, we want to keep it focused in the walkable downtown area? Or is this something that we would be interested in expanding beyond that to, say, along the bus routes or just as a blanket entire town change?
I think that's a good question and one I need to spend a little bit of time on. Um, I think I've been thinking of it townwide, but I think we have to just have to spend some time with it.
I'm, I'm curious to hear from Doran on this. If you have any, any thoughts or any responses or any feelings about the idea?
Well, uh, so I, my name is Doran. I, uh, um, I'm a member of the, the tenants' union of Brattleboro, uh, newly formed in March. Um, we have about, uh, 50, 60 active members or so. Um, but we just get reached out to by a lot of people inquiring about tenant landlord law. And so we've been becoming quick studies on the subject, um, in the state of Vermont. Um, yeah, just the fact that, that, uh, yeah, that right now the 3% of apartments in the state are open, which is insane, um, in terms of the, the small, uh, just how few apartments are available in the state. And obviously, uh, we're kind of one of the biggest land buys, um, in the state of Vermont over the last 30 or 40 years. Um, the realtors can't sell houses fast enough. Uh, and usually the markup is pretty insane. So it's definitely a time, because so many people are moving cities and getting to the country where it's safer. So, uh, it's definitely the need for affordable housing is pretty insane. Also, you have 22% of renters in the state of Vermont are at fear of losing, are, who are not, either not paid rent or are back rented or like have, are in months in arrears. So as soon as, uh, the eviction moratorium ends, you will see a, a mass, and, and we're one of the better states. We're at, you know, one of every five renters, most, some states are like 43 to 45%, because of half renters are, um, have not paid rent or are at fear of, will be losing, uh, their rental. So, you know, Vermont is definitely, um, in need of affordable rent. Uh, I just, myself individually, I've probably been asked by, uh, 12 to 15 people who are moving back to the state of Vermont, who I know personally grew up with, uh, four apartments. And I've, I think I've seen one tiny house and one apartment that both got, were gobbled up before I even looked. So it's definitely a need. I think it's always the worry about the, the importance of keeping them affordable and, uh, and decent. Um, because, uh, you know, that housing should become, uh, towards being a human right instead of, uh, as a commodity.
Um, Tom, Tom, you got your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. So if we're considering this, my understanding is that we're considering an interim bylaw in order to make it effective ASAP, right? And, and then, but I think I support this if, well, if we're viewing it as an interim, I think maybe that's kind of a trial and then, but I, I hope we're doing it with the impression or expectation of implementing it permanently instead of just like a, um, well, I understand the timely need for it due to COVID and everything, but, um, you know, there's also other people who may want to, um, expand their units on their property, but aren't, you know, maybe they don't have everything together like this year, 2020 to do it, but they would maybe next year. But then maybe the interim bylaw would be expired by then. So I'd like to think that we're going to make it, um, active ASAP, but then also continue indefinitely if it goes well. Is everyone else under that, um, thought as well, or?
Happy, did you?
Yeah, do I look confused or something? I'm just trying to think of the process of an interim, you know, it's an interim bylaw, but then it's a permanent change to an actual physical building. But then does that, if it were to expire or if we weren't to pass it permanently, does that building then become grandfathered? Or is it in violation of zoning? So I, I was just trying, thinking through like what an interim bylaw means in this, in this case. Um, and, you know, we can change the zoning, you know, I kind of, I understand the urgency and I am inclined to go ahead and try to do something to, um, you know, make that workable. I just want to make sure, like, we, we want to actually be able to have a comprehensive thought process around it. So then what would the steps be to fix it, enhance it, change the neighborhood? You know what I mean? Like, what would be the steps, the next steps to take to, to, when we have more time to think more comprehensively about it?
So that's a good question, um, which will lead into another discussion tonight. Um, given interims up by law, um, they can last for two years. Um, permits are actually issued by the select board under them. Um, I, they may be able to delegate that authority to the DRB or the zoning administrator, but, um, any, anything that was approved would be illegal. You know, you know, if we reverted, it would be illegal non-conforming use. So, um, the unit could remain their units. Um, in terms of process, I mean, basically it's there for emergency action. Like, you know, we've studied something and we think it's a problem and we, um, want to do something about it. The last time one was used was for fluvial erosion hazard, um, interim zoning, um, to deal with the, the flooding hazards out in West Brattleboro. Um, the process would be, you know, we'll, we'll talk about it a little next, but the idea would be to do, you know, we'll, we'll do some more research. I mean, in my mind, we, we have been talking about this and therefore it's a move, a step that we would want. We'd be moving in that direction anyway. So I don't view it as totally undoing whatever we might do. Does that make sense?
In terms.
Come to a different.
In terms of the area, I mean, I, I, I feel like we were looking at a very, to Jessica's point, we were looking at a very specific area that we were going to be working on in terms of trying to promote denser housing. It, can we, can we allocate this zoning to that area? And now, I mean, I have the map sort of in my head, but I can't identify it. Does anybody else remember that overlay that we were looking at? Where we were specifically talking about trying to create a different sort of housing sets, um, by, by, by densifying it?
I think we were pretty conflicted on that.
What?
I, I think we're, we're a little bit conflicted or at odds with like what we wanted that to be or look like. Um, if we wanted it just in the downtown or just on certain streets or, or, um, expanding into the, into the more neighborhood-y areas of Brattleboro, like this, the Cedar Street and the, the Pine Street areas. Um, I, I have another question as well, if you don't mind. Um, it's about the, um, the apartment grants and if this would affect or those would apply to this opportunity as well?
Are you talking about the apartments and homes that Brattleboro area affordable housing, um, has? Would this apply to the, um, potentially? Yeah. I mean, if somebody's creating an apartment, yes.
So this is George. Actually, I managed to reconnect. I don't know if you can hear me at least. Can you?
Yes.
Okay. And I lost the, whatever, about five minutes of your conversation procedural, that at one, somebody asked about if there's garage space, et cetera. But with respect to the housing, these units that will be supported by the relief fund, they have to go to people who are either homeless or at risk of becoming homeless for the next five years. If somebody wants to take advantage from, for that, of that money, otherwise.
And the rule is you have to use the money by the end of December?
Yeah, that, that's correct. They have to be expended by December 30th. That's, that's how.
A very timely and lovely opportunity to increase the housing stock in town, um, both through the CARES Act funding, but then also possibly through the, the grants for apartments and homes. I, I would love to see, um, Sue, I would love to see you put together a proposal for this. And what I would love to have in it is, um, for us to approve it, the select board to approve it, but the process to be that it, uh, it is made very easy to do, um, either through the development review board or staff approval, rather than having to take it through the select board.
I'm also just, I'd like to know which, uh, what, which funding source it is exactly. I'm not, I've been looking at some of the ACCD information and I'm not clear on which part of the CARES Act this is coming from.
It's the rent relief act. They, Vermont got $40 million and they, uh, it turned out that at the end it was something like $32 million and they used $25 million for, uh, actual rent relief, meaning people who couldn't afford to pay the rent these days. And $8 million, uh, which at the end became 6.2 is for, uh, to reconfigure housing, to take vacant, uh, units and, uh, renovate them so that people can move in. Uh, and it was awarded both by, first by the House and then by the Vermont Senate. Uh, I don't have it in front of me, but I can send it to you. I mean, I have applied already. The name of the person that sent my application was, I think, Citlin. And of course, she's in Monpelea. Uh, but I can send to you in about two or three hours, I can send to you the, you know, the actual legislation and of course, the request that they sent to us, that we apply, or not the request, but the request for applications that they sent to us.
So there are about four different housing programs that have come out through, uh, the CARES, the federal CARES funding. One is actually for projects to create, um, uh, to kind of convert motels into housing. Um, and so that's something that some larger organizations are pursuing. And then there is this, um, there's also funding for, uh, kind of direct relief for, uh, people, whether it's to pay back rent or if they have a housing plan and their plan is to move to Texas. It might be some. is to move to Texas. It might be something to get them stable housing if they're kind of in the system and they need some assistance in making that happen. It could also be deposit on housing. And then there's mortgage assistance for those people in need. And then finally, there is this for creation of landlord, creation of units. So those are kind of the four housing. I can send you some information on them as well. But Jessica, to your, to your point, I'm happy and eager to kind of look at some language. I agree with you. There wasn't kind of any consent on the area that we were talking about. In my mind, I'd love to see it townwide, but I think that we want to stick with the residential neighborhood, probably the mixed-use areas, basically our areas that have water and sewer. Because, you know, that's just good planning. It's easier access to transportation. It's more walkable and it's got the infrastructure to support it. So if I was drafting it, I would tell you right now, that's probably the areas I would look. So it would include all the neighborhoods.
How likely, how likely if we were, if we were to pass this on to the select board, that it would go through without concern on behalf of, I mean, if we didn't restrict it?
If we didn't restrict it, if we went townwide with it? I don't know. I don't, I don't know yet.
And should we, should we consider anything as far as, this is for particularly efficiency apartments, I think, and not the boarding house style, like one-room rental sorts of places that maybe a hotel might want to convert to? Is that true? Do we, do we want to consider adding something in about that or just keeping it with full apartment style?
I think, I don't think the other one is necessary. We've kind of done that review and know that our hotels and motels could be converted at this time and Act 250 views it the same way. So I don't see an obstacle there. I can't, I should say, I mean, there's probably some along Route 9 that maybe fall in the rural zoning district that could be an issue, but I think the ones that were of interest are covered. But I, we could definitely look at that. I know that the Putty Road, Canal Street, and into West Brattleboro Village, those hotels wouldn't have a problem converting.
Great.
So how do we move forward? Can we, can we empower you to, to send us a proposal? And do we need to meet again? Or can we vote on it on, on email?
We would need to meet again.
Okay.
So I don't know if you have, go ahead.
I would recommend that we, you know, decide on a, on a, an emergency meeting just to deal with this piece so that we can get it swiftly passed on.
When is the next select board meeting? That might give us some good guidance on when we would need to meet to be able to have something for them.
So they meet on the first and third, so they meet on the fourth and they meet on the, when is it? The, the fourth and the 18th, sorry, fourth and 18th.
So will we be able to get them something in time for the 18th?
I will need to speak with the town manager to see about scheduling for that, if, if we can make that happen. Otherwise, I would say the first meeting in September.
We'd have to be in time for the warning of the, it'd have to be on the warning of the select board meeting, right?
Yeah, it's, yes, thanks, Prudence. That would be really tight.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Maybe the 11th, 12th, somewhere in that week, week of the 10th.
We could meet and vote. Is that what you're saying? Yeah, that's fine with me. Let's, let's shoot for that. Why don't we just make it the 10th since that's, it's a Monday, rather than change our day?
That's going to be really tight.
Yeah.
I can, I'll make it work.
And you, I mean, I may have a conflict that night because I think Frederick has a meeting, so that may not matter.
What, what, what did you say?
Yeah, I can't make it on the 10th.
Okay.
But as long as you've got a quorum, you know.
While we're all on the phone, it may be easier just to go ahead and pick a date where we know we have a quorum instead of, because, you know, instead of like guessing at the 10th and then seeing. So should we try for the 12th? Or Sue, what, what?
Yeah, I could do the 12th.
Raise your hand if you can do the 12th. Or raise your virtual hand if you got one.
Tom says yes. Kate says she can do any day on the week of the 10th. So yes, that's good. We're good. Let's do the 12th. Okay, super. Sue, if you need some help doing that, let me know. I can like push a pencil.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, that was public comments. Or do we want, do we have more public comments? Okie dokie. Approval of the minutes, I confess, I did not get, I can totally space that. So has somebody else read the minutes carefully enough? Or can we all take a minute to look at them? Or can I take a minute to look at them? Everybody?
I have looked at them. So I will make the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, great. Can somebody second that?
Second.
Somebody else can second it? Okay, the motion has been seconded. Are there any comments? They look good. Everybody, you're fine. All right, hearing none comments, I'll just ask for a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please raise your hand, either physically or virtually. Hand raised, says Tom Prudence.
I can, this is George Pritz again last time, so I think I can hang up now, right?
Yes, thank you, George.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for taking it all so far. Great. Take care.
Yep, you too. Stay safe. Okay, Prudence's hand is raised. The minutes are approved. Thank you. Organizational meeting. This is our annual organizational meeting where we hold elections, review the bylaws and open meeting law, and then we're going to add an item, which is to discuss our meeting norms. So the first are elections, chair, vice chair, and clerk. I guess we should open the nominations. Somebody want to nominate somebody for chair?
I want to nominate Felicity for chair.
Thank you. I, that's fine. I will say there's a proviso, which is that I, I, it looks like I will have to be driving to Boston one day a week, starting in September. And if that week is, if that day is, is Monday, then I'll be out of town on Mondays. So Sue says we can change the meeting time or, or I can not serve. But otherwise, I'm happy to serve as chair. Okay?
Okay, we'll take our chances.
Do we want what? Do we want to nominate the full slate for each position and then vote on the full slate?
I guess. Is there any other person who wants to be chair? Or anybody else wants to nominate somebody for chair? Okay, vice chair? I nominate Kathy.
I'm going to, I'm going to second nominating Kathy.
Kathy, are you willing to serve?
I'm willing to serve, but in the effort of, you know, our, our open democracy and allowing other people to step up into leadership positions, I'd be glad if someone else was interested in being vice chair. I'd be glad to pass it on.
Well, you could do so by nominating somebody, Kathy.
I don't want to put anybody on the spot like that. Somebody could self-nominate if they feel that they want to do that.
Kathy, you can put me on the spot.
Who's that, Tom?
It's I. Yep, that's me.
Tom, I would nominate Tom to be vice chair.
Oh, shucks. Thank you.
Tom, do you accept?
Oh, of course. I accept. It's an honor.
Any more nominations for vice chair?
I was just gonna, not, not to add competition, I was gonna ask Jessica if she was interested. She served for a while.
Oh, I really like just being part of the planning commission and giving my opinions. I don't want a leadership role.
Okay.
Thank you for thinking of me, though.
Happy to do it.
And given Tom's willingness, I do not accept the nomination for vice chair.
All right.
My career in public service has been without competition so far.
Is there a nomination for clerk?
I nominate Doran for clerk. You're moving up quick. You're moving up real quick.
I think clerk is largely symbolic, right? Because the, since, since Sue and Andrew take, take all the notes, I think it's, it's a title without, without any work, if anybody is interested.
Exactly.
Kate, have you been, who's been clerk? Was it you, Kate?
I was one year. I might currently be, but I don't, I don't feel the need to continue. I'm happy to pass that. I've also, I've had a little trouble the last, like, little while with attendance just due to COVID. I have sort of limited babysitting options, so I'd be very happy if someone else wants to take it.
Prudence, did you want to say something?
No, sorry, I can unmute myself.
That was, that was an old one. So who, nominations for clerk, we're still at that.
I nominate Prudence.
Would you accept being clerk?
Is it true that it's symbolic and doesn't have to do anything? Sure. I'll take on that.
That is true.
Okay. All right, so we have a slate. Do we need to, do we need to make a motion to vote? Or can we just go forward and vote?
You can go forward and vote, I think.
All those in favor of the slate as, as it has been nominated. Myself as chair, oh, you, okay, you're all raising your hands already. Tom? I, says Tom. Okay, yes, fine. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Okay, the reviewing the bylaws. Did everybody get a chance to, to read through the bylaws? Okay. Tom had one change and I have one change. So Tom, you want to go first? Suggest, read first change?
Sure, yeah, that was that email I sent just like an hour, hour and a half before our meeting. I brought it up last year during the summer when we reviewed. Through being on the Wyndham Regional Commission, I, you know, the intro to that was reviewing the documents and things. And it just struck me that they have a, a part of their conflict of interest statement, which I haven't seen anywhere else. Not that I study conflict of interest statements, but I found it pretty, like, a pretty good caveat to show that when you're, you know, maybe have an interest in something that you're partaking in, but there's a larger group of people and you have a, your interest is comparable or equal to that larger populations, then I, my interpretation of it is that you're just viewed as one of those members in the population. So it's not that you have to remove yourself. So anyway, I, I'm not reading, obviously, verbatim, the quote, but it's in that email. And I proposed that we add it, or, you know, some, some Brattleboroized, you know, editing or variation of it, but we add it to our bylaws. Hopefully everyone got a chance or can get a chance right now to see that email I sent with that paragraph.
I see some nodding heads. Does, does everybody get a chance to read it? No, Kathy didn't. Want to take a moment?
All right, well, well, I can, okay. Does anyone want me to read it out loud right now?
Why don't, for the record, Tom, why don't you read the language that you're proposing? I think that would be helpful and it would be good for the recording.
Okay, great. Let me find it. Okay. So within the Wyndham Regional Commission's Rules and Procedures section, Conflict of Interest, this isn't the entirety of it, this is just part of it. They have a paragraph that states, "A conflict of interest does not arise in the case of votes or decisions on matters in which the member has a personal or financial interest in the outcome that is no greater than that of other persons generally affected by the decision." So for example, if, 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 you know, if current Lieutenant Governor Zuckerman is voting for something that has to do with farmers and benefiting them, the fact that he's a farmer doesn't mean that he has to abstain himself from it. Because he's, you know, has the same comparable interest to the other farmers.
Tom, can I ask you a question? There is a conflict of interest policy in the bylaws. Are you suggesting that this replace what's there or amend what we have there to include it?
Right, no, no. Right, yeah, thank you. No, I'm not suggesting a replacement at all. I'm just, this is kind of like a, a little exception or a caveat or like a clarification.
I see the first sentence being changed a little bit to, so rather than it being an automatic disqualification, that kind of, that language could insert there.
Right, yes. Yeah, because I've always, I've always read the conflict of interest statements that, that are like in our bylaws. And I've thought, well, then if somebody has a, you know, an interest and it's, like, let's say someone represents, you know, lives in the neighborhood and they want to represent the people of that neighborhood and some interests that they have. Well, they also live in that neighborhood, so the fact that they're doing that, I mean, did, so do they have to sit out and not vote? I, I, I think that's kind of unreasonable. So I like having seen this, this kind of exception and clarification with the WRCs, and I think we should adopt it.
Um, comments? Yes, Kathy and then Prudence.
I'm just trying to find, I feel like the, the. I'm, I feel like in representative town meeting, maybe several years back, maybe it was the town, there was a language change to the town charter and there was discussion of the conflict of interest policy in the town charter. And I'm curious if what is in our bylaws is the language from the town charter and whether we want to consider if we have something different from the town charter, if that, if that is, I don't know, a problem for any reason. I was trying to just find it. So give me a minute, see if I can find it.
I've got it.
If it came from the charter, wouldn't it say this is from the town charter? If it came from the charter, wouldn't it say, "This is from the town charter"?
No, not necessarily. It looks like it does come from the charter.
Are we bound to keep the relationship between the charter and our bylaws the same?
I will need to check on that.
Would, does someone have handy the existing conflict of interest language? I'm trying to find it, and I'm struggling to put my finger on it.
It's on page four of the bylaws that was sent around.
Oh, okay. I probably just not seeing it. Thank you.
Yeah, section 12. And it's pretty much a blanket, you know, if there's a conflict of interest, you have to recuse yourself.
So, our conflict of interest statement in the current bylaws is, pretty much mirrors what's in the charter. So, it would probably be good to get an opinion if we're gonna, from the town attorney, if we're gonna make a little change to it.
How does everybody feel about?
Since we can't act on it.
We can't act on it because we need advice from the lawyer?
Well, no, because the bylaws, as Tom pointed out, say we need five days' notice.
Oh, right, okay.
We can change it in our next meeting.
Yeah, we could do it in our next meeting.
So, maybe check with the town attorney and just see. I'm not opposed to it. I think that caveat seems reasonable.
Yeah, just one more thing. I feel like, in addition to being a caveat, it also just helps define what a conflict of interest is. Because technically, anything that we vote on or decide on for being in the town of Brattleboro does affect us financially or personally. So, if someone really wanted to, like, you know, split hairs and stuff, they'd say, like, anything we're deciding is a conflict, you know, or anything we're deciding, we have some sort of interest in. But I think this addition helps define what's just, yeah, what's not included, and what's, you know, exceptional.
Prudence?
I'm a little concerned it might add some confusion. We don't want to weaken the conflict of interest, but it may not either. But I wondered, like, with the amendment that we're talking about, if one of us owned a building that could be converted with a change in density, would we have to recuse ourselves then, just for our own education?
I would, I would think that that would be a substantial benefit. So, yeah, I would think you absolutely would.
And Tom's.
Like unto those benefit to others.
Thanks.
Um, so, do you want to look into what the lawyer has to say, Sue, about that, and it'll come back? Okay. I want to add one edit on page one. On section three, Duties of Officers, the list for the chair, I would recommend that we change his absence to their absence, or some other non-binary pronoun.
Yes, please, thank you.
I would make a blanket recommendation that we take out all of the binary pronouns in there. There's a great number of his or her, but I particularly think at least we could change that one.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Awesome. Consider this the five days' notice for that change.
Okay.
I can bring this back on the 12th, if you want to wait, if you want to do it on the 12th, we can do it on the 12th.
Okay.
Um, okay, everybody review the open meeting law? Open meeting law, I feel like. Alright, last one is, yes, somebody wanted to talk about open meeting laws? No. So, the last one is discussion of our meeting norms. Jessica, do you want to talk about this, or you want me to talk about it? Oh, wait a minute, there's a comment in the chat. Yes. Shall I read the chat? Doran just made a comment. "I'm pretty sure right now with town council, anytime a law comes up about tenants and landlords, any landlords have to recuse themselves if they have financial gains possible, where tenants do not have to, because they do not have direct gains." Answered Prudence's question. So, Jessica, do you want to talk about meeting norms, or do you want this to be a more general conversation?
A more general conversation.
Okay. So, that was a notion, I mean, raised about how we invite members of the public to participate in our meetings, and we have been sort of doing it, catch as catch can, and we maybe can talk about how we do that, whether or not there's a better way of doing it, a more inclusive way of doing that, a more inviting way to doing that, and also a way that would encourage people to feel welcome, and we might get more public engaged in our conversations, which would be all to the good. Comments?
I was struck recently by conversations with the folks that are leading this police reform conversation with the select board. Talking about, "Hey, do you know about the planning commission? And hey, we just did this big downtown plan, and, like, have you heard about, have you heard about this?" And they're incredibly politically active and socially active, and they had not even known that it was a thing. Which made me think, oh, man, like, what are we not doing, or who are we not talking to, or who are we not connected with? Or why are we not excited enough about the work we're doing to engage other people in it? Because I think that, you know, a lot of the work we do, I mean, it's not like immediate, but it does have long-term shaping influences over this town. And, yeah, so I was really concerned by that, but also, like, a little fire was lit under me to be like, hey, I should reach out to a couple of people, invite them to this meeting, because, like, it's interesting. Yeah.
Comments?
Am I allowed to?
Yeah, please.
Um, yeah, so, with the tenants' union, we put our support behind the broader community proposal. We have been actually meeting regularly with Brattleboro Solidarity, Lost River Racial Justice, the Root Social Justice Center, and out in the open. All those organizations have been collaborating on the weekly rallies, as well as the, all the police stuff. But between all of our organizations, we have about somewhere from 600 and 700 members. At least 500 or so are in the southern Vermont region. And, so, I mean, part of joining the tenants' union was to help support tenants in southern Vermont knowing, seeing sort of difficulties and struggles. And so, then Jess clued me into the planning commission. So, if we want, if you want people here, I can get people here. And I think that's, the thing is, is right now, there's a, such a fire. I mean, once again, if you look at the town council meetings, never do you have regular meetings with 150, 160 people. It's just like unheard of. People are really taking the concept of reform and changing their local town politics to heart. And the best part of it is that so much of those numbers are young. They're younger than me. Me and Jess and I are in our 30s. They're all in their 20s. They want to be in Vermont. They are definitely young and radical and engaged, and like, it's really empowering to see. Because they want to be involved in politics, in town small town politics. But I don't think I've ever heard that statement said. So, yeah, so, as is wanted, because I'm assuming that, is it every meeting is public, is open to the public?
Yes.
And I will propose it, I will share it not only to the tenants' union, but to all those groups, and if you want more people to come, there, people will come. Especially because housing is such a giant thing right now. And it's wild, we get a lot of emails. We only run since March. We established a website and just started learning. We are not lawyers, so we send people to lawyers when it gets more than what we know we can do. But we get so many messages from people that are afraid to lose their apartment and upset their landlord, even if something illegal is happening, because there's so few housing options in the area. It's very common.
And, you know, I think that, like, this part of, this part of our agenda, like, my goal in sort of saying, maybe we should talk a little bit about how we, what our norms for our meetings are, is, you know, how do we create a space, or create rules, or create a structure or framework where people can participate easily, and they know what the expectations are? Because in watching some of those select board meetings, it has been really clear that, you know, there is, there has been some unlimited commenting. Meetings have lasted six hours. I don't know if that's within our capacity as planning commissioners, when we invite the public in to have a six-hour meeting. Also, like, I definitely heard that some people are having trouble with the structures that were set up occasionally, and feeling like they were not being allowed to speak, because the structure's limited, either the time, or the space, or the list of people who got called on. So, I'm just wondering if they're, like, we've been sort of very loose about who participates in public commenting, and how just, you know, Oscar showed up to a couple of meetings this year. Dory's here today. George was here and participated in the public comments section. I remember a meeting where we had a landowner come, and he missed the first five minutes of the meeting, which we just breezed through public comments, because we didn't have any. And he sat through an entire two-hour meeting. And at the end, after we adjourned, he was like, "Oh, I had something to say." So, I just, like, I think in reviewing all of our bylaws, and who we are, and how we work, it might be good to maybe set some guidelines for ourselves on how to include folks.
Yeah, you're making me also think of the values kind of exercise that we went through, and whether we want to take that lens in crafting something. And two other thoughts. One, I think part of the difficulty is there's often, and this happens, you know, it happens in town meeting as well, you know, there's only, like, each body only has a certain jurisdiction. And so, figuring out, you know, and in all cases, there's a learning process for, you know, what a particular body can actually act upon by law, or, you know. So, to me, that's kind of the trickier piece of it, is figuring out how you consciously and respectfully set up the bounds, so it's clear, like, what we do, what we can do, what we can't do, what, you know, to sort of, you know, create, like, appropriate and useful and efficient comment, you know? And then the other thing, and this is kind of more of an aside, is like, I feel like there's so many additional kind of public committees that could use a good infusion of young people, right? So, the Wyndham Regional Commission, or the Connecticut River, you know, and this is through my lens, doing environmental work, like the Connecticut River Joint Commission, the Wantasticate Subcommittee, you know? I'm sure there are many others, but, you know, bring it, just figuring out how to, like, like, hold it. My thoughts.
I want to pick up on something that you said, Kathy, because it seems like, one of the things about, that's different from the planning commission, really important difference between the planning commission and the select board, is the planning commission doesn't really have decision-making capacity. We have the capacity to, you know, think through things and make recommendations to the select board, but it's a long process. And so, I mean, I think it's great to get people engaged in this work, but I think the people who get engaged with us need to recognize that they may work for a year, come to meetings for a year, talking about a particular issue before they actually see a zoning policy, or some kind of change to downtown. And basically, I mean, as an educator, I love that notion, because, I mean, if you're in it for the next five minutes, you might as well not bother. I mean, we need people engaged in issues for a long, long time in order to make systemic change. So, the planning commission could be good practice for actually an enduring engagement in our triple democracy. Sorry to be political.
We have a couple of comments. I was wondering if we could read the comments?
Oh, yes.
Chat. Thank you.
Wyndham Regional Commission, what were the other committees you mentioned? So, there was, Kathy, you mentioned the Wyndham Regional Commission, and then, oh, Kathy has offered them. Wantasticate Subcommittee of the Connecticut River Joint Commission, and there is a website there in the chat.
I would also add that the Conservation Commission needs members, the Energy Committee, the Development Review Board. So, if it's environmental, or land use, or energy-related, there, those are all committees that are department staffs that has openings. And I like the, I just want to add another piece that, you know, we go through the usual, we posted, as it's required to be posted by open meeting law. I'm wondering, from Doran's perspective, or, you know, either are any of you involved on other boards, are there other ways that we could be getting out there, what we're doing, that maybe people will be more engaged with? Because we have to do the basics, and that's pretty much what we're doing. You know, are there other lists that we're not on? Should we be sending out a newsletter, monthly or quarterly, or something, saying, "These groups are working on this. Here's when they meet."
Yeah, I think maybe a social media posting, you know, consistent social media posting about, like, whatever maybe decisions were made in the meeting, or things that the planning commissioner is working on might be. And the other hard part is, like, it becomes, trying to communicate that out is a resource need, right? So, it's like, there's only so much staff time for you guys. And we're volunteers, right? So, it becomes, you know, trying to figure out, like, an easy system to get that information out, that doesn't become burdensome, is tricky too.
But there must be a way, I mean, now, of course, with COVID, it's difficult, but then, of course, COVID also makes it possible for people to attend meetings from home, which makes it even more likely. But the connection with the high school seems like, Andrew, I remember you went there to talk to people, you guys both went there to get people engaged in the downtown plan. I mean, that's a way to get.
We had, we had some momentum in the beginning, working with Jack Clark, and things were gonna, I feel like, be going places, but then COVID happened, and that all just kind of dropped, unfortunately. But I was really, I was really hoping that was gonna, and I hope it can go somewhere, because I engaged with 20-something youth. I mean, yeah, it's not a lot, but I felt like it was gonna get bigger gradually, and I wanted to make that an effort myself, as someone who's 24 years old, I'm younger. So, to get people in high school, especially who grew up in this town, involved at a young age, I thought was really important. So, hopefully, we can. So hopefully we can revamp those activities sooner than later. Or try to get them involved using this kind of platform too.
Yeah, Dor.
There's, it's definitely, the COVID has provided a devil, an obstacle in some ways, but, but a great opportunity in others. In terms of like, the only reason why the tenants' union came around was because we were all unemployed. You had to punch up very hardworking artists, teachers, who all of a sudden did not have jobs. So we could pour ourselves into that project. And part of, for me, getting, getting engaged was, I live downtown, I live at the American Building. So I live right above Main Street. And the biggest worry for me was the museum project. Because I was looking directly at what, what that building was gonna be a major, I'll use, in my terms, a gentrifying force in terms of rise of apartment costs and so on and so forth. My building is not a terribly nice one, but I love it. And I love living downtown, but just well aware that that much money poured into a center of a town absolutely disrupts so much. And not that, not that you can't build something wonderful, but to go to a certain degree does cause a lot of disruption. That, that was the first time I really felt the call to get engaged with, with tenant organizing. And we organize our entire building, actually, which is 13 or 14 households. It's 25 members now. We have an unofficial tenants' association where we have Facebook message group. So anyone, we message throughout the building. If anyone needs something, it's proper, full-time Vermont-style community building. People bring food to each other, people watch each other's dogs. It's, everyone asks everyone to wear masks in the halls, so we posted posters in the halls, just asking any guests to wear masks. It's a really empowering, exciting thing. And we all wrote a letter to our landlord saying that there are some people may not be able to pay rent. And this is what everyone can pay. And we all live in here and we want to remain here. And the landlord was willing to work with people that could not pay. So you sort of, that was the beginning of my getting engaged. So there's so many people that want to be engaged, especially when you have the time, when capitalism eats you entirely up. When I usually work my three jobs, getting engaged is far harder. But the desire to be engaged and to support local and to be local is here right now. And so many people are not going anywhere due to the crisis. So I think, I mean, it's just like you let me know what, this because housing and planning and is all part of the things. Like I, I, you know, I can speak to a body of 80 or 90 people and, and in greater meetings to a body of that connected to four or 500. So if there are things that want to go out, that makes sense within the, within the realms of what we do. Also, we could have a tenants' union person here every meeting, if that is a desire, to talk about what, what is going on with tenants. We receive a couple of emails a week, just from different people asking questions about contracts and legalities. So, yeah, so there's a lot that can be done, but honestly, word of mouth in the state of Vermont is such a fast mover.
So that brings us back, I think, to this question of procedure. Because I'm, I'm like the Select Board, I at least I'll just come right out. I'm not gonna sit in on a six hour meeting. I don't have the competency to do that. And, and I do, and I do think, I mean, we have the, we have the luxury of being really a deliberative body, one that, you know, we, we take time trying to work things out. And so there has to be a way in which we can listen to what people say and then we can sort of go away and cogitate on it and then come back and make, do a more quick process when we need to make decisions. But it is true that that doesn't necessarily happen organically. That actually has to be structured. And that's not just a question of sort of establishing meeting norms of saying, you know, everybody's gonna be polite and speak for yourself and don't speak for others, those sort of things that, that I'm familiar with. But I also really, really, really personally don't like the, you get two minutes to talk. Because some people say, um, and you know, that's a whole 30 seconds. And some people speak much more quickly and some people, it takes them time. So I, I don't like restrictions on the amount of time, but I also believe that we don't, we, we have to do something so that we don't sit here for six hours. We can't, we can't do that. We've been keeping ourselves to two hours and that seems like, I personally think to, to ask people to take two hours to bring your full consciousness to a meeting is sufficient. And we should be able to get our work done in two hours. So, but how do we do that? And is it necessary for us to do that tonight? Or can, can we empower some people to think on that and bring forward something in our next meeting that would help us be efficient as well as being inclusive?
So are we talking mostly about trying to get the word out about our meetings? Or more about our meeting process once people are here?
I think we're talking more about our meeting process. I think Doran has just told us that, that, I'm sorry, Doran, I don't know what pronoun. Since you're new to the group, what is your pronoun?
Yeah, he/him. Thank you for asking.
Um, but he, he's, he seems to say that he, he can get us whoever we want to the meeting. So that's good. The, the question is to make sure that we make it the kind of meeting where people feel like they're gonna have spent their time well and their, their ideas are gonna be listened to and they're gonna actually see them in, in something that we do.
I think it depends on the topic. Some of it, you know, like some of this stuff you need to be educated, like, I had to ask Andrew to send me the zoning map and, you know, some of this is a little dry, to be honest. So we, we have to be realistic about how many people are gonna want to sit through our two hour meeting. Some of the topics will be more interesting than others. But I think if we are encouraging and polite and make time for people, don't cut them off. And, you know, I think, I think that's a good place to start, which certainly is how we have been so far with the few people that have been interested.
Right. Kate, you put your microphone on.
Sorry, who are you talking to?
Kate.
Yeah, I was just gonna say briefly, I, I don't have a great answer, but I've, I've been thinking before we had this meeting about, I, I would like to get people engaged more through social media. So, you know, when you have the warning about what the topics are going to be, if there's a way we can invite people to submit comments ahead of time. Now, I know there's barriers even with that, but, you know, if you can get people submitting comments, emails, social media, Facebook, whatever they use, when something's warned, you know, that might give us time to read them, to consider if we're seeing, you know, comments trending in a particular way or if we're seeing, you know, something really insightful jumping out. I, I'd also love to have people attending. But, you know, I think, you know, that might be, for some folks, it might be hard to say, like, you need to come to a, several two hour meetings to, to, you know, be involved with a process deliberatively all through. But you might be able to submit comments ahead of a meeting or questions or something that you have. So I've been kind of noodling that around for a while now and I'm glad this, I'm glad this has come up for us to consider.
So one of the ideas I have, I'm a little leery about the social media, only because we don't have really good guidance from the attorneys about how best to use it. I mean, as you read in the open meeting law, I mean, we, we can read comments and stuff, but we're not really supposed to be participating and commenting back on social media. So I, I'd probably want to think about that one a little bit more and try to get some guidance. I think it's a useful tool and we need to be better about using it. So I think some of the ideas here tonight were good. And then one of the other things is, you know, having the right people in the room. So, you know, I'm thinking, all right, we put together the agenda and then maybe it's a brainstorm about who do we let know that this conversation is going on and, and making those contacts? So if it's the housing, it's the tenants, it's the landlords, you know, we make use, we begin building this database of interests and I guess sending out the agendas as well. If it's transportation, it's BCAT, it's, you know, we know we have prudence here who helps share that information. But maybe that's another way to make it happen.
It also seems to me that the Planning Commission meetings never get reported. Like there's, there's never, there's never an article in the, in the reformer or the comments about that, you know, the Planning Commission came up with its core values. This to me should be an article in the newspaper. Because once a planning commission establishes a set of core values, then you actually have something that you can assess its work on. And if you're into that, which people should be into assessing the work of their public officials, somebody should have written an article about that. I don't know if we need to do a press, more press releases to sort of say, you know, the Planning Commission decided this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna make all our decisions now based upon these core sets of values. And look at these core sets of values. And hey, Brattleboro, what do you think?
I, with all due respect to the local media, they certainly get our agendas. You know, they're understaffed. They come out to the public hearings usually. We, we would have to do more press releases, I think, to kind of get that going.
Would, all right. We should move on. Yes, Kathy?
I, I guess the one, the one last thing I was gonna say is since we're considering the bylaws and this came up under the idea of the bylaws or reviewing the bylaws, I think it would be nice to actually put some statement in the bylaws or some, some norms, like a list of norms in terms of how we view the public, how we embrace public engagement, how, you know, I mean, right now with doing everything by Zoom meetings, there's a certain kind of, almost more egalitarian, if that's the right word, way that we are witnessing each other. But when we were sitting in the room in the library and the planning commissioners are sitting around one table and then the public is kind of like, where do I sit? You know? You know, I think it would be good to actually maybe write something and add it to the bylaws about how we would and, and, you know, what norms there would be in terms of how we want to interrupt, interact with the public or how we would invite the public to interact with us more likely. And I'll just stick this, I had a, I'm, I'm just gonna share a document that was sent to me today by someone from the Board of Connecticut River Conservancy that is, addresses some of the questions of white supremacy culture. And it has some anecdotes and there, the, some norms may actually be developed maybe from this document. But I'll send it around to everyone.
Great.
Can I do that? Or does that, can I send it to everyone? Sue?
You can share it. We shouldn't have conversations about it until a meeting.
It seems to me that we could build our norms out of our values. I mean, that would be consistent with having decided upon, because we have things like togetherness, a sense of solidarity within and across populations. So if we developed a, a norm based upon the fact that we value togetherness and we value equity and we value equality, that would, I think, be helpful in terms of figuring out exactly how you practice togetherness and how you practice equity. But maybe, maybe not tonight.
I really appreciate that we, that we took the time to have this, like, start this conversation. And I'm, I'm looking forward to, to seeing what happens next with it.
Well, does somebody want to volunteer to sort of put together a, a short list? I mean, I don't, I, I think, I, I, I think it's good to have suggestions and not straitjackets about exactly how to behave. So that we can look at it in our, in our, in our meeting on the 12th. No volunteers? Oh, hell, I'll do it. For God's sake. Come on.
I, I would also volunteer, but I'm obviously not a commissioner, so.
All right. We'll, we'll jump out of, off of, from Kathy's document. Kathy, send that around to us and we'll see what we can do.
And I don't, I think, was that Doran who said they would volunteer? I don't think you have to be a commissioner to volunteer to help with this.
Hey, Andrew, it's okay for you to, to do, to work on this.
Okay.
Doran, do you want to? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, say the question again.
Well, we, we need somebody who's willing to, some bodies who are willing to draft a list of norms for us to adopt into our bylaws.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be willing to help with that.
Great. Okay. Andrew, you want to take the lead on that? Will be your.
Well, I, I would, but the one thing is I'm going on vacation starting tomorrow and I won't be back till Monday. So maybe, I mean, I shouldn't take the lead, but I could definitely help on the latter end before that we meet on the 12th.
All right. All right, Doran, can you send me your email address?
So this is looking for, draft a list of norms into your bylaws for accessibility?
Just for, for our, our regular daily engagement with ourselves and the public. Okeydoke. Let's see. Now we have the Subcommittee reporting on the municipal planning grant. Suggestions. I think that's you, Jessica.
Is it me?
Yes.
I was on the Subcommittee too.
Oh, great.
And John.
I'm, so, so we met on a cold rainy morning up at Memorial Park in Mask to talk about what, to talk about a few things altogether. It was a chunky conversation about what we might apply for the municipal planning grant and how we might be able to begin sincere work in creating an equitable framework for the Planning Commission to operate by our choice in topics for applying to that municipal planning grant. So we, we discussed a lot of options, but the one that everyone seemed to be most excited about and the one that seemed to also fit our, our goal of a project that we would really be, be challenging ourselves on the equity frontier and engagement frontier was housing. It's in our Towns Master Plan to create a housing plan for Brattleboro. And so I think that was what the Subcommittee was going to recommend to the Planning Commission. Sue, please correct me or fill in any gaps.
I think you covered it.
What, what is involved in a housing plan?
Say that again?
What is involved actually in a housing plan?
I think we were particularly discussing the issues of density and looking at our zoning. And I think there are a few other things too, weren't there, Sue?
It would basically be looking at what are the community housing needs and creating a plan for how to get to it. So it could be policies, it could be land use regulations, it could be programs. Probably be a little bit of everything. It kind of picks up on the missing middle housing, you know, we, we could, looking at the full spectrum of housing. What are the needs of the community and how can we address it?
Yeah, can I add some to it?
Yeah, we, I mean, we all know this is a topic we've been talking about, how to, how to increase housing and fill and add sort of the, the missing housing. But also, if you read the, delving into the planning grants document, it's pretty much seems like their top choice of, in addition to COVID stuff. But housing is the, is one of the state's main priorities as well. So I don't know if, if, if some years we, we miss out on the grants, but if we want to be really competitive, it seems like this is the category to go with. And also, we were thinking of, we can kind of craft the housing plan just like we did the downtown design plan. You know, the downtown design plan, the, the name just seems like this generic thing just about the downtown, but we, we really at least tried to customize it with those values or, or focus points of pedestrian and bicycle and, and stormwater, addressing stormwater and long-term economic viability and place making. And so I think, I mean, the little bit that I know about RFPs for, for, for plans, we could do the same with this one and, and say, like, let's focus on the, the underserved neighborhoods or, you know, the, the under, under-resourced areas and people of town. And then another issue is maybe like helping to identify and promote opportunities for accessory dwelling units. You know, maybe there's some, some resources and best practices that, that property owners can use that they don't currently know about to add to that. I remember Josh saying one of his neighbors did a great addition to their property. And so that seems like something that could be done more. Yeah, so we could just keep adding, you know, we could have four or five main, like thematic points of focus for the housing plan.
A couple of, I've, I've been involved with conversations with other people where we had started looking at housing for a grant program through the Federal Reserve, the Working Communities Challenge. We were not successful at getting that grant. But some of the issues that have come up there is the high cost of construction. So are there programs that we could put in place to maybe help front the connection to the utilities? And then as houses are sold, you know, maybe then they're paid back. Does that help reduce the cost to make the housing more affordable? Or we heard about the needs of the LGBTQA community and wanting to feel safe as they age. So are, you know, is there a certain housing that we might need or communities that we can create in town to, to meet the needs of that community? So, you know, it's, how do we create affordable housing? How do we make it for the people who are here? What are our needs? It would kind of be data-driven, but then also looking at, at different programs. That maybe the town would want to consider.
So is this, is this, do we, do we need to actually vote on this? Or can we just sort of claim that this seems like a good idea?
Um, I think for now, you can just say it's a good idea. We'd come to you at the September meeting with a proposal because eventually it would need to be signed off by the select board.
How does everybody feel about this? I mean, I, seems prescient to me. Okay. Great. My acclamation. We have a new caller on the line. Hello, caller five. Welcome. Oh, caller five. All right. Sorry. Um, okay. So then we'll apply for, well, we'll hope to apply for a municipal planning grant to deal with housing. So returning to the downtown plan, item number G on the agenda. Sue, you want to, we do have a, we have the recommendation to change the language around the trucking. Because that is not viable anymore.
Let me, let me start with the fact that we haven't done anything with the downtown plan because the consultant was delayed in getting us the updated draft. So that is on the schedule for August to get out to the various groups that we want to interact with. So that's the start. It hasn't gone out to anybody. But I think we're at the point, depending on what comes out of tonight, that it's ready to, to be taken more public. So we'll start that process.
So has she made the changes of moving the, of changing the station?
Yes.
She, okay.
Believe so. I've, I've only been working today, so I haven't gotten all the way through it. But I believe the changes have been made.
But that, the changing on the, on the, on the truck recommendation would have to happen as well, right?
Yes. Yes.
That, but then, but that's just a text-based change, so that someone can do that. It doesn't, we don't have to. Okay. Do we need to talk about that? It seems pretty straightforward.
Up to you guys.
Does anybody want to talk about that?
Well, sure. I'll just say something real quick because not all of us, in order to not break open meeting law, Prudence took that off of the, the reply to all. So I don't think the rest of you, except staff, saw some emails that we had, correct?
That is correct. I'm looking at it now. Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, so Prudence offered to contact the Wyndham Regional Commission and the Representative Molly Burke on the Transportation Committee to get to the bottom of, of what I said in my email. And they confirmed that, yes, we are in the middle of the 20-year extension of that increase in the federal interstate highway weight limits. So now the, the, any truck that can drive on Vermont roads can drive on the interstate. We're 10 years into that and we have like 10 years more. So short of like some state law just straight out banning trucks that way a lot in general on every road, which isn't going to happen, I don't, I don't really see that there's any, there's any, you know, the downtown design plan calls for changing some state law and presumably that's, that's the state law. Well, maybe, maybe it was kind of miswritten, but that's more or less the law that was, it was advising to change. But, you know, we've, it's, it's already in effect and, and this is where we're at. And my assessment of it is unless there's some, you know, big societal or technological change, we just, we just have loud trucks going through downtown and that's the way it is.
The, it turns out the change in the law actually may have increased truck traffic, which, I mean, it's a, it's a, change was fine, but it just, it turned out that trucks that used to go up the western part of the state are driving over to come up, coming here to get on 91 now, depending on where they're going. And, and also Chris Campney pointed out that part of it's our geography of, you know, where we are, where, you know, certain roads from New Hampshire come through here and that's going to bring traffic. It's a bit of a pisser that, that, that the plan was dependent upon that because now, I mean, knowing that the trucks are going to be there, what would, might we have done different in the plan?
I don't, I don't know that I agree that the plan was dependent on getting them off the roads. I think it's, it's, it's been a Vermont conundrum for a long time. I think the fact that we have, you know, Sir Sosomo and some, you know, big industries down on 142, they're going to be there, they're going to come through Brattleboro to get over to Walmart. So I, I don't know that I agree with the fact that the whole plan hinged on it. I think that there's probably, maybe there's some things we can do to make the traffic flow better. You know, having a light at Flat Street and again, you know, at Malfunction Junction, you know, there's a lot of idling and the trucks are loud. The cars are loud there too, from that idling. And, you know, I don't know if the traffic flow will improve with the new bridge going in and maybe it'll go a bit smoother, but I think that was a hopeful piece of it, but I don't know that it hinged on it.
Other comments? Okay, so what, what, we, we had suggested that in the next meeting we would ask some people to come so that we could get their feedback. And all I remember was the DRB. But, but is that now going to happen in September?
Yeah, we, we're not going to be able to do it September 12. I'm sorry, August 12.
Okay, yeah. We want to load a whole bunch of things into that meeting. That meeting is, is in order to get this housing zone passed. You don't want to turn that into a thing. Okay, so then, so then that, that, basically what we've said is that we want to get as many people, I mean, Doran, there's, there's something, I mean, I don't know that there's, what we need to do about the, the downtown plan is we have to get a sense of prioritizing it. There are a lot of suggestions in it, but the Planning Commission would like to get a sense of what are the community's key priorities so that we could, okay, yes. You're reading that, Andrew? Can Doran get a copy of the plan? We'd like to get. Yeah, sorry, who's, who was talking?
Sorry, I was just going to say, I mean, I think that we have to do, I have to get it out there. So, yes, you know, we'll, we'll put that out there, I'll do a press release. We'll get it out on Facebook and we'll make sure Doran has it as well in various groups over the next month.
How can we help with that?
Somebody wants to write a press release. No, in the, I mean, I'll get it to you and you can share it with your, with your people.
And it'd be very helpful to have some sense of what it is we want, what, what will be, what we can do with public comments. In other words, there are some public comments that will help, that could be helpful and some that won't be. Why did you do this? Maybe not as helpful. Then I think the priority is this as opposed to that. I mean, although if we need to answer the question of why we didn't, that would be good, but maybe that could come in the press release.
So are you, are you asking for people to, you know, are you thinking that there's some sort of evaluation for it or like a survey that goes with it? You know, read the plan, take the survey, tell us what your priorities are?
Well, no, I think it's more, I mean, this goes back to this notion of figuring out our norms. I mean, I think we really just want to hear people talk about, you know, I've been living in this town for such and such a time and I really wish we had X or I really like the idea of that and that seems really important. Because that's, we, we, we don't have that, we haven't had that. I, I feel like we have not had an enormous influx of public conversations around what has been proposed in that plan. And I at least would like to hear a variety of different voices. Yeah, Prudence?
We tried to get public input. I mean, that was part of the, the RFP was focused on that. But, so now there's a plan, so we want people's reaction to the prior, to what, the ideas in the plan, I guess, right?
Right. We don't want the rewriting.
No, we don't want them rewriting the plan. I think we want reaction to what's in the plan and we're going to have to stand up the public process however weak or low turnout it had. I mean, we did do a public process, we did have a, you know, over 500 responses to the survey. I think, I think we want to get the reaction. I think opening it wide to tell us what you want has the potential to, to, you know, just to open it up too wide and throw out the entire plan.
Well, I'm not, I'm not suggesting tell us what you want. I'm suggesting here, you know, we're going to have a streamlined thing where, where it's easy to see. Here are the proposals. And some of the proposals are long-term, some of them are short-term. I think it's just a question of what are the thing, like, I have a personal opinion on the things that I think we should do first, but that feels a little, I mean, undoubtedly, we're all going to hash out the things that we, we think are the most important, but it's useful to get other people's input. Like, I'm still thinking about Oscar's comment on the, the parking lot. Because, because I just, that's a perspective I hadn't thought of. I think that space is a really, could be a really interesting public, more enhanced public space. The idea of it becoming a derelict, empty space is something that I hadn't even considered. That seems, it seems important. And Oscar was, happened to come and show up. It seems like we should be more systematic in getting more people to come and give us that kind of feedback. Not, not to, oh, I have an idea. No, responding to the plan as a document.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah.
I misunderstood. Late today, Brandy did send a brochure, which needs a little tweaking, but it does have kind of the implementation program on it. So it's possibly a nice piece to get out there. I, I haven't spent too much time with it yet though, so I would, it's in the Google Drive. I would encourage you to get it.
Okay. Maybe we can all look at it before the August 12 meeting. If anybody has serious comments, send them to Sue.
Is that the, the one-page document that could be like, that kind of looks like a poster? It's gone from the folder now.
So there's two, there's a poster and a brochure in there?
Well, maybe I have to update my drive, but yeah, I saw the poster and I, I like that. So, you know, I have a little, some things to add and, and whatever, but yeah, I'm, I'm glad to see that. That looks good.
Yeah. Update your drive because I put the brochure in late.
I see it.
This afternoon. Yeah.
I, I wanted to mention one thing too that came to my mind. I think last meeting we talked about and, what was it, like, making the title of this whole plan? You know, instead of a kind of generic downtown design plan, we'd rename it or give it a subtitle to make it a little more enlivening. Well, just one thing that came to my mind is, it's not necessarily a subtitle, but it's just changing the title in general is about, it's still semi-genetic, but it's, gives some, some more specificity, is "Enlivening Downtown Public Spaces." Because it's not just downtown that we focused on really. We're, I mean, we're focusing on the public spaces entirely, so we should at least highlight that. But then we should, I think we should say what we're trying to do with it. And maybe a word like "enlivening" kind of encapsulates all of that, but maybe not.
I like that.
I like that too. It's good.
It does have in small letters underneath a vision, what is it? It's like downtown plan, a vision for downtown's public spaces as, as a little subtitle, as it were, now.
I actually missed that. But, but still, I think I left my proposal in there. It, it, it shortens it up and adds the, and adds an enticing word to rope people in.
Tom, are you throwing a ball against?
Who was throwing a ball? Well, it's gone now. Okay, so, so look, look at that brochure. Send comments to Sue and we'll hope to get more public participation in helping us look at the plan in our September.
In September, if there's a way that, that we can do a brief or speedy or enter, enlivening perhaps, Tom, an enlivening review of the document or the plan or the major points of the plan, just so it's not one of those. All right, did everyone get that? Let's talk about it. Any comments? Just so that we can all be on the same page with the points and the questions that we're asking of the public. Is that something we can, we can have for that meeting?
Yeah, that's, I think that's a great idea. Okay.
Just before we leave that, sorry, wasn't there, no, talking about videos that would be created to, on certain aspects, that the consultant was going to create some video? that the consultant was going to create some videos that we would send out?
Yeah, um, I need to follow up on that. Because this all got delayed and then I went on vacation, so.
Okay. Um, so I'm going to propose that we postpone the discussion of social justice until our next meeting, um, just because we're 11 minutes from the two o'clock or the two-hour limit and I don't want to give that discussion short shrift. Okay? Um, and, and we may, I mean, we, maybe we can integrate it more into the conversation around norms, but I, but I, but I do think there's something, there, there, there's a lot of, there's a meaty something there that, that I want to talk about. Um. Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Me.
So moved.
I'll do it.
Is there a second? Um, yes, Prudence, I think there is, all those, I mean, I, I just want, Prudence just put into the chat, can we put the social justice practice earlier on the agenda so we get to it? Yes. Um, is everybody willing to take some time on the meeting and, and the 12th to talk about that?
I, I would like to, this is Kate. I, I saw there were at least two links in the, um, agenda that was set out for this meeting. Uh, wealth gap related to social justice was, is, um, is there more that we should review ahead? I feel like I'd like to review some things to, um, target my thinking on it because it's such a big area for me personally.
The video, there's the wealth gap, which is, which is a TEDx talk, so it's, it's short and it's pithy and it's really, it gives a lot of really useful evidence about, um, uh, the disadvantage of African-Americans of the past 200, 300, 400 years in the United States. And the other link is an interview with Ibram X. Kendi, whose book, um, How to Be an Anti-Racist is being widely read, um, right now. And he establishes a set of definitions that I thought it would be just helpful for us to sort of use as definitions. So if you've read the book, um, you don't need to look at that video because it essentially reproduces it, but if, but if you feel like the, you want the video version as opposed to the book, um, the book is good. I'm halfway through it at the moment. So, so those are two things to sort of establish some data and, and some vocabulary. And the other one, piece from the New York Review, I think just clearly articulates the notions of what we're up against in terms of our culture, um, of financializing everything and, and establishing an understanding of the polarization that is so deeply ingrained and embedded in our culture right now that we, we have to address it in order to be able to understand how we're going to talk to each other about complicated issues, um, because we're really out of practice. There's a reason for that. Yes, Andrew?
I haven't, we have another resources in the office. It's a book called The Color of Law, and I would be willing to send it, lend out a copy, um, if those are interested in reading that book. It's all about race and zoning in the history and kind of why we have segregation and how it continues to be, uh, prominent. So, uh, send an email and I will make sure I get that to you.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a copy.
Um, I also, for our subgroup, uh, on the demographics of Brattleboro and the different census tracts of like, like who is actually here and who was counted in the last census? So we, so we can put aside any notion that we are, we are as white as we think we are.
Okay. Doran put something in the chat that says also, "The end of policing book by Alex S. Vitale, to understand the world of policing in America and to understand the defund and abolition movement." Um, okay, so I, we interrupted the vote. I think we were at, yes, Kathy?
Yeah, sorry, one more thing. We do not want to leave tonight. Now, in that conversation we had about, um, our norms, considering that we're going to talk about this on the, we said the 12th, do we want to like invite the Root Social Justice Center or, you know, are there some targeted folks we want to actually say, like, just so you know, we're having a discussion, would, would welcome your perspective or something like that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, sure.
Can I just make an observation? I'm worried about this meeting on the 12th. If the goal is interim, like I, I feel like this is a big topic and I would throw up, right? I don't know if anybody's interested in having like a longer retreat on a Saturday or something. I just, I'm worried if we're trying to hammer out zoning, doing these both in one night, it's going to be more than two hours, so.
Yeah, I think that, that's well taken with me. I, I think the 12th meeting, I think we originally were conceiving that as, um, getting that, uh, change, um, potentially ready in order for people to take advantage of it. Um, the change to allow people to take advantage of the, the CARES funding for apartment creation. Is that right?
Yes. Okay. Um, an emergency meeting, a retreat, and then the planning meeting in September seems like a lot to ask of all of us. Um, and, and, and this is another one of the things that happens to us is that we are doing important work and we, and, and we keep getting behind on the things we want to do because, because we have stuff we must do. We do, we have to do the downtown plan in September and we have to give that enough time in order to really get good feedback and get, um, be done with this phase of that piece. Um, so I, I'm, I'm out of ideas about what else to do.
Well, no, we just did two meetings in September.
We could do two meetings in September. I have to say that, you know, I, the clock is ticking on, on, on my bandwidth here. Um, I'll be in the midst of teaching at a brand-new institution with a number of students that I have never even conceived of in the last 24 years of teaching. So, um, I'm going to be a little, uh, running a little scared. Maybe by October I'll have, I'll have a better handle on, on my, uh, time. But I will try. I can, I can make an honest attempt.
I would love to. Also do it, I'm just throwing it out there that, that, that's a lot for one night and, and I'm, you know, I'll hang in for as many hours as you need, but.
What was the other thing that when you, we wanted to put on the 12th? We were going to do the, the.
Interim zoning.
Interms, and, there was something else earlier.
The bylaws.
The bylaws.
The bylaws and the, and, and the norms. We want to, you know, get the, the norms done and that's, that's a lot. So, so yeah, let's plan on doing this mid-September and hope that we can manage to do that. And I also, I mean, I, I, I think if, if everybody is, if we, we, we can say we're going to just keep the framework within those four pieces of, of, of common readings, then we can start to use the vocabulary. And, and maybe the people who use the vocabulary can define the terms. So if you're going to use the term anti-racist, you can say, as Kendi uses the term anti-racist, so we all understand what you're talking about. So as we, as we go forward in our conversations, I think we can actually start to do the work that we're trying to do to, to, to transform the planning process to make it more inclusive.
I, sorry, one more thing. I would just really love to, to start the meat of this social justice conversation before we tackle the conversation around downtown, just to show a commitment to the communities that I think are really impacted by this downtown plan. And I think that if we have good public participation in the downtown plan conversations about public spaces, you know, there were, there were dozens, tens, tons of comments about, um, you know, who belongs in our downtown spaces on the surveys. And I really want to make sure that we are, we are setting the groundwork appropriately to, um, to have the, the appropriate people in the room and the appropriate values, um, you know, not just the norms, but, but also the, the voices, um, so that when we launch into that conversation about the downtown plan, um, we are slightly more prepared.
Point well taken, Jessica. All right. We'll put that on our meeting for the first September. It doesn't seem like there's anything else we can do.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor of adjourned the meeting? Raise your hand. All right, Tom, hand raised? Is Tom, Tom, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
In favor.
Okay, all right. Good night, Doran. Thanks for joining us. Thank you all.
Good night.
Stay safe.
Night, everyone.
Night.